February 3rd meeting and we'll call it the quarter. Welcome, you may notice we have a new clerk with us here, Misty, welcome to the dice. And we do a great job assisting Lynn West there in the clerk's office, so welcome. As is our custom, we will begin with our invocation. I have that opportunity tonight and I'll just tell you that the words that I will use this evening are not mine, and I'll paraphrase a bit, but if you happen to know Barry Black, if you've ever heard of Barry Black, he is the Senate Chaplain, the US Senate, and he has been very busy in the last week or two with the opening prayer for the impeachment hearings, but he's an extremely eloquent speaker, has been there for years, and so these are his words, not mine. So if you choose to do so, you may bow with me. Let us pray. Eternal Lord God, send your Holy Spirit into this chamber. Permit our board to feel your presence. Illuminate our minds with the light of your wisdom, exposing truth and resolving uncertainties. May we understand that we were created with cognitive capabilities and moral discernment to be used for your glory. Grant that we will comprehend what really matters, separating the relevant from the irrelevant. Lord, keep us from fear as we believe that your truth will triumph through us. Eliminate discordant static with the music of your wisdom. As always, Father, we pray for those in service to our county, state, and nation. Shield them with your grace and protection as they strive to protect us. In Christ's name I pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is our informal comments. I'm looking, I don't see anyone signed up to speak, so that takes us to our additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda.
Chairman, I'd ask that we remove consent item number 10 for further review.
We have motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve as amended?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve consent as amended, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, takes us to old business. We have no old business, that takes us to our new business, which is appointments to boards and committees. Board of Equalization and Review. Terms of Mark Ashcraft and Dutch Hardison on the Board of Equalization and Review expire in February 2020. Both Mr. Ashcraft and Mr. Hardison have applied for reappointment. No other applications have been received. Make a motion to accept their applications and appoint them. You have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consolidated Human Services Board, Missy Baker, who serves as the Registered Nurse Representative on the Consolidated Human Services Board, has applied for reappointment on this board. No other applications have been received for this vacancy. The Consolidated Human Services Board considered Miss Baker's application at its regular meeting on Monday, January 13, 2020, and is unanimously recommending her reappointment.
Motion to accept Missy Baker's application and appointment.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, item 16, appointment of chair. In accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 105322A, the Board of Equalization and Review should be composed of members of the Board of County Commissioners, are there designated. By resolution, Union County operates with a separately appointed Board of Equalization and Review, requiring a chairman to be appointed for each annual appeal period.
Motion to appoint William Randall Ladcock as recommended.
Have a motion, any discussion?
I've known Mr. Ladcock for 50-plus years and he is an exemplary citizen, and I think we're lucky to have him leading this board.
All in favor, the most say aye.
Aye.
Proves. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple things for the board tonight. One is to remind the board that we are in the process of scheduling joint meeting between the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education. Looking at two separate meetings, the first, we are looking at February 24th, the Board of Education actually meets tomorrow, that date would be confirmed then, we'll let the Board of County Commissioners know if that date has been confirmed. The second date's April the 20th. With regard to the February 24th meeting, the purpose of that meeting will be for the Board of Education to present its capital requests for the year. They are also planning on presenting a long-range capital outlook. I think that was a topic of interest by the Board of County Commissioners last year when we had the joint meeting. They'll be presenting that at that time. And in conversation with the school superintendent, he has made me aware of pending impacts of the not having a state budget, those pending impacts on the local school system, what that might mean for them, and their current levels of funding, and potential impacts to Union County, so we'll be getting an update on that at that time as well. With regard to the April 20th meeting, that will be the presentation of their operation budget, and we look forward to that. The second thing I have for you tonight, you'll notice a map that's on the screen in front of you. And this is by way of just wanting to let the board know of work that is being done by staff with regard to water line extension. And if I could...
Mr. Manager. Hold one second.
All right.
Okay, you're good now, go ahead.
I'm good, all right. I've been told I get out in front of people this week, so sorry to be too far out in front on that presentation. So with regard to water line extensions, I don't want to rehash the current programs that we have in place, but just let me briefly speak to that and how our current concept review is factoring into that. So currently, the board, well, this past year, the board has done a tremendous amount of work with regard to water line extensions. You totally revamped the short main extension this past year. As you recall, we had a backlog, that backlog has now, we have a schedule for eliminating the backlog, we have a new policy that will be going forward. There is a prioritization list of how individuals will be prioritized on the list that wish to have a short main extended to their place of residence, and that was a tremendous milestone in addition to the funding that was applied to that this year. If you recall, we started off the year with $600,000 in funding for that project, and that got up to $5 million for that project on an ongoing basis. The second, and through work of consultants that were hired to look at the new transmission main construction program. Transmission mains, if the board will remember from our work session in early 2019, those are your water highways through Union County. Those are your larger lines, they're generally not viewed as distribution lines, which can be tapped into. The prioritization for the transmission mains will be largely contingent upon the comprehensive plan update that's currently going on, that you're all familiar with. It will also be contingent upon the Public Works Master Plan, which feeds from the comprehensive plan, and then the CIP will be developed, and the board will have an opportunity to review and vote on the prioritization of large transmission mains in the county. That work, however, is going to take a number of months to complete, to go through the planning process, excuse me, and get to a point where we actually can start putting lines on the map and figuring out where those mains will go. Very briefly, the consultant has said that in prioritizing new transmission mains, the following factors should be taken into account. It should be to improve the hydraulic process within the system to reinforce that, it should be to improve service reliability and quality, it should be consistent with the master plan, it should support economic development zones, it should expand the water service area, and lastly, should seek to coordinate with NC DOT or town-funded roadway improvements. So you have basically two programs on each end of the spectrum. One, short main extension largely related to getting lines from a distribution line to a home, a process of individual homeowners signing up for those, the other being, you know, where do the large lines go? So once we heard that information from the consultant and we saw what, and I'm talking about we staff, saw what direction the board was taking with regard to these two programs, that began a process of reviewing our existing infrastructure, water infrastructure, and you have on the screen in front of you a map, and the blue lines that you can see there, real thin blue lines appearing on this map, are the existing water lines, and then you see some black dashed boxes with some red lines within those boxes, and I'll explain to you what that is. So what staff was interested in seeing in all of our pressure zones, both in the Yadkin or the Rocky River Sub Basin and then the Catawba Basin, would be how can we maximize the efficiency of our current system to make water available to current residents of the county in the underserved, unserved portions of the county? So very interesting question. Public Works produced some maps for staff review of each pressure zone, and you remember the pressure zones, there are, I want to say six to eight across the county, but we started with the pressure zones in the Yadkin, Rocky River Sub Basin, and what you see in front of you is the pressure zone that covers this, is known as the 762. And that is on the eastern part of the county. Showing you this one because this is the one that we completed preliminary work on first, we're still working on the 853 west, the 853 south, and then we'll get over into the 853 in the Catawba Basin. But again, the objective of this was to have a map, and again, this is a small map, but the maps we were working off were large, they actually identified how big the water lines are, not just the fact that there's a water line there, because the size of the water line does matter when you're trying to reach additional residents or customers of the system. So what we've done is we tried to identify areas in the 762 that are identified here by the black boxes where we could potentially connect to existing service lines and make a loop, and improve the hydraulic performance of the system, and at the same time, take that line through the areas of the greatest population density within that area. So we're trying to reach the greatest number of residents or potential customers as possible, trying to use existing infrastructure. If you've got a line going down one road and a line going down another road, and there's a crossroad that would connect the two, if we took a line across there, how many potential customers could we serve in that regard? And you see here, there are one, two, three, four, five on this map that we've actually, there we go, six, seven, eight, all right? Think I've counted that right? No, there's seven.
Seven.
Seven. Okay, all right, so you get to see what those are. Public Works then, once those had been identified in concept, Public Works took those, estimated the linear feet of the line necessary to serve that, the number of parcels that these lines would contact, the number of potential connections, the number of connections per mile, they estimated the size of the pipe, the cost per foot, the estimated construction cost and so on. Very rough conceptual numbers, but trying to understand the opportunities that may exist within each pressure zone. So in this particular pressure zone, within the seven potential opportunities, there are 27 miles of identified pipe. These 27 miles come in contact with 802 different parcels, there are 542 potential connections along the routes that you see identified here, and when you take and you look at the number of potential connections divided by the number of miles, you're getting a potential customer ratio of about 21, 20 to 21 customers per mile, which is, according to the information we have from the consultants, that's a really good range to be in. Estimated construction cost for all seven of these would be around $27.2 million. So again, this is concept, and I left out one of the most important factors I wanted to call, is on this map, and you can't see it because of the size of the map, but on this map, Public Works overlaid maps from environmental health that actually show us where we have tainted wells or low-producing wells. And so that was another consideration when we were looking at where are the current lines, how could we construct a loop? On those loops, are there any contaminated wells or low-producing wells from a public health standpoint that we could mitigate those situations? One particular loop would mitigate seven contaminated wells, another loop would eliminate six contaminated wells, but when you blow up this data and you really start looking at where the houses are at, and the houses don't show on this particular map because of the size, but when you blow this thing up and you look at where the houses are at, and you look at where these contaminated wells are, you begin to see that there are a number of neighbors surrounding where that well is that may not have had their well tested, and it would stand to reason that if you have two or three wells that are contaminated in a specific area, then you have others, so the actual number of wells that could be, you know, contaminated wells, it could be addressed as a result of something like this, we really don't have the full scope of that, but I feel certain that it's pretty significant. Now, this is concept, okay? This is concept only. The idea of this is to identify, again, current infrastructure to try to figure out how can we make best use of our current infrastructure, create hydraulic loops, those types of things to increase the efficiencies, reach the greatest number of folks, and eliminate any of those contaminated wells. We will proceed with this, working through this concept in each pressure zone until we've completed it for the entire county. I will point out that no hydraulic analysis has been done on this work, that would need to be done. Each of these, and every box is labeled by letter, each of these would need to be studied to make sure that we were gaining hydraulic efficiencies. We would need to understand of all the potential connections, are there individuals that would actually want to connect if the line was available? We'll need to do some work through community, reach out to understand that number, and then using that information along with, in a similar format as to how we prioritize the short line extension, we would prioritize which of these we would recommend to the board to fund and construct, that would come back to the board. I expect that this is going to take us several months to work all the way through. I found it very interesting to work on this project. We are not using an outside engineering firm to do this, this is being done all in-house, and like I said before, and I'll say again, this is conceptual. At this point, we need to understand where we can gain these efficiencies and which ones of these are the most economically viable options that we can potentially get started on in the 2022, 2023 timeframe, potentially. We will figure out schedules, make recommendations, look at the funding, that type thing, bring all that back to the board for consideration. We do not anticipate that rate increases would be necessary for this as funding was projected for transmission and short main extensions. We feel like that we can chip away on these potential projects through that funding that's already been identified. The last thing that I will leave you with is that of the three pressure zones that we have reviewed thus far, which would be the 853 west, which is the pressure zone that includes Fairview, Unionville, and basically the area above when you get to Marshville, and the 853, Brian, is it south or east? South. South, that goes all the way over to the rough edge area, from 601 basically east, or excuse me, west, over to the rough edge area. When looking at those three pressure zones themselves, there are 26 of these opportunities that have been identified in unincorporated Union County. So I call these opportunities the ones with the black box around them, so 26 of these out of those three pressure zones. There were four identified in Unionville and six identified in the Fairview area. We will certainly bring back to the board and let them see, when we have this information fleshed out, we'll bring that information back to the board and let them see what's inside the municipal boundaries, and that may bring us to a discussion about intergovernmental agreements for water extensions within municipalities, but that's a discussion for another day. The last thing I'll leave you with is, if you'll notice the purple dashed line, Brian, could you bring that? You see the green line here and the purple line? All right, that purple line is the 24-inch finished water main that would originate at the finished water plant, that would be the Yadkin Finished Water Plant in the Unionville area. You can see where it comes down to Highway 74, and when it gets to 74, it's a 12-inch line that goes south all the way to Old Pageland Monroe Road, Belk Mill Road, that's your water highway south. I wanted you to see where that, and you've seen this line on maps several times at this point, but I wanted you to see it on this map, because when you start looking at adding 26 zones of opportunity in unincorporated Union County and another 10 in the municipal boundaries in the north of Union County, we currently do not have sufficient water resource to, if we were to build this all today, we don't have sufficient water to put in these pipes. That, when we have the Yadkin Finished Water Plant online, it will be able to supply water sufficient for these projects, all of the projects that I just mentioned, the 26 plus the 10 up in Unionville and Fairview, in addition to whatever else the board wishes to fund on short line extensions or main line extensions. But that Yadkin plant becomes key to making this type of water available in unincorporated Union County. And I know that I probably have, that's broke my own record for county manager comment, but I was pretty excited about the work that staff has done on this in the past few weeks, it seems to really have come together, and I know that the board is interested in this topic, and I wanted to take the opportunity to share it with you at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Hales. Yeah, I appreciate the manager's diligence, and I know that I got to participate in some of the conversations that's been going on for 12 to 18 months to gather the data that he just presented to you. The water capabilities, water and sewer is a very lengthy process, it doesn't happen overnight. I did, I think I've mentioned this before, I've had two citizens reach out and thank this board for the short line, which they anticipate getting water this summer, one in the Unionville area and one over in the Sun Valley area. So our phase is work, there's a lot of information out there that's not accurate, I think you can go back to our past work sessions and find that our staff has worked diligently... I think you can go back to our past work sessions and find that our staff has worked diligently to try to provide relief for these wells with arsenic and low-producing wells. And what you heard tonight was some of the advanced phases of that. That process will take a while. But you know, one statement was out there is that the water is only for the West, and it's only for developers. That is as far from the truth as it can be. Yeah, developer will be able to use the water, but it'll be available to our citizens. I like the way Mark explained to me one day, because that pipe coming from that treatment plant will tie into the existing system that will provide a backup. Should we lose the Catawba, we'll have the Yadkin and vice versa. So that's very important. But as it comes through the county, it will have Ts, and Commissioner Rushing and I made this point almost over a year ago, back in actually 2017, that it's important that we have these Ts, and I like the way Mark related to, it's kind of like that new turnpike. You've got exits that allow you to get into other parts of the county. And so we made sure that in the design of that, that that was available. But I want to thank staff and all their hard work for making sure that we are best utilizing this resource that's coming to us.
Mr. Ray.
Thank you. That's too hard acts to follow. Thank you, Mark, for finally bringing this to the public. And I've got some comments I would like to say to staff, and I think I've earned my battle scars, so maybe a little stern, but it's how I feel. I would like to congratulate and assure all of the employees of Union County Government that 2019 was, in my opinion, the greatest year of accomplishments and meeting goals that has ever occurred in the history of this county. I am so proud to be a part of this organization and have the opportunity to be a part of what will be called the beginning of Union County positioning itself for a great comeback in the areas of commercial and industrial investment and the creation of high-paying skilled jobs. Our past leaders and staff have created a destination county of one that must be looked at by all national companies that are looking to expand in the area of great schools with national recognition, adequate resources of skilled labor, low tax rates, and sewer and water availability, a major avenue of transportation, i.e. the newly completed Monroe Expressway, which already has a North Carolina recognized opportunity zone for business and development, commercial on it, a vibrant county governance organization with a vision for the future, and that's exhibited by what Manager Watson just talked about, and a long-term source of quality water that we own for the next 100 years and beyond. Do not become disheartened by rumors, lies, and threats that have been rampant in the last several months. The majority of this sitting board is extremely pleased with all that you have done and the direction of this organization and the progress we have made and put ourselves in a position to achieve. Thank God we are a nation, state, and county that lives by the rule of law and answers to our constituents regularly at the ballot box. We know that we live in a government that the majority rules, so have no fear that one voice represents the voice and mood of this board. We care about each and every one of our team members in Union County Government and citizens of Union County. We appreciate your resolve and dedication in your daily task of doing your job. I am reminded of the many challenges and dark days in my life, both personally and professionally, that nothing happens in the life of a believer that God has not preordained, and you'll find that in Lamentations 3-38. So I say to you tonight that all of this shall, too, shall pass, and we will look back on it one day as but a bump in the road. The reason I am assured that this will pass is that staff has been challenged so many times, a lot of times by me, but they have come forward with the answers, and we have resolved these questions with adequate outcome. Let us learn from this process that we live in a new age where more explanation and more public involvement is required. I would also say that the public needs to involve themselves more in the public workshops that we have conducted to educate us so that we can get adequate input before we vote on it and not after we vote on it. I look forward to this month of February as to receiving our last permit from FERC, and I emphasize the one permit we like, not permits that has been said. I eagerly look forward to the days that EDC starts bringing more economic grants to the B O C C for consideration. I look forward to the day that this county is moving forward with only positive communications coming out in social media and area news outlets. I know that this day is near, for the truth shall stand for all eternity while a lie will fall as surely as the leaves do after a killing frost in Union County. Thank you to all employees for all that you do, and have faith that good will always prevail.
Mr. Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Manager, that was probably one of the best agenda items I've ever heard in a Commissioner of County Manager's Comments section. If you'll inform me next time you're going to give a nice presentation like that, I'll prepare me a typed document to read in front of everybody. But since I don't have a typed document, I'll tell you what I've done this week. I called the Environmental Management Commission and asked them about some of the things that we've agreed to and some of the things that they were aware of, that we had other water sources that have been available to us, which could actually take I B T away from us with the Yadkin project. We've been hearing time after time that we own that project, we'll own that plant. That's simply not true, because within our own I B T application and agreement, we agree that if we don't grow by 10,000 to 5,000, 5,000 to 10,000 people per year in Union County, that they can take some of that I B T away from us. If we don't maintain certain qualities, do certain actions like restricting people's watering of their lawns and washing vehicles or whatever, that if we don't do some management practices, that the I B T can be taken away from us. I also had a conversation with the folks at U S Fish and Wildlife, who the reason that we're driving on a toll road today rather than a bypass, a true bypass paid for instead of us having to pay a toll every time we ride on it, is because the county manager years ago refused to work with U S Fish and Wildlife to stop a sewer plant in northern Union County. That statement was made by that manager in a mayor's and commissioner's conference after a vote of three commissioners told him to work with U S Fish and Wildlife. So there's a lot of things here that, you know, we hear, and I like these prepared comments. I was going to say no comment tonight and get out here early, but, Manager, I would suggest to you that next time you're going to bring maps up, you should do that as an agenda item rather than manager's comments. If you'll look at the bottom of that map, can we put that map back up, Brian? If you look at the bottom corner of Union County, it is not in the Rocky River Subbasin. It's actually in the Yadkin Basin. I believe that basin is called 18-1, and that basin could probably serve without any interbasin transfer whatsoever. And our friends over in Anson County, our neighbors, actually have water lines to most of those roads, if not all of those roads. So if you'd like, what we could do is talk to Anson County about serving those homes in extreme southeastern Union County with water, seeing as how they got water closer than a lot of places that we would have. You also have water to our south with Chesterfield County, who has water lines touching the roads several places there. Maybe we could reach out to them like we do with the City of Monroe and other municipalities, as you stated, and we could offer that our citizens could get their water from another source and be billed by that other source. But of course, if we do that, we do run the risk of losing interbasin transfer. That second phase, I believe, is when that 24-inch line is going to come from the plant and go down to Marshville. That second phase, which, if we're allowed to do this in 2024, after waiting several, several years for this, then maybe that water will be going down there on the second phase of this. Maybe we can all vote to put it down there in the first phase and skip going over to Indian Trail while U S Fish and Wildlife determines if the recent mussels found in the Crooked Creek, where we're planning to build a sewer plant, have been determined to be hill splitter mussels or not, which is an endangered species. But we'll figure all this out, and everything will work out, and you gentlemen can rest assured that I'll keep doing my due diligence and asking questions, and I appreciate the typed statements. Like I said, give me a little heads up next time, guys, and I'll type something out.
Mr. Hales.
Well, like you, Commissioner Rushing, I was simply going to say no comments, but I first apologize, and by the way, I did type it up, and if you don't know that by now we're going to respond to your nonsense in these meetings publicly, then you're crazy, so you missed a good opportunity. I want to first apologize to the public that I must continue to spend valuable time pointing out the continued fake news from one of my fellow commissioners. There are several things that I want to focus on. First, there have been some comments through social media that indicate the information that I provided at a previous board meeting regarding past rate increases was inaccurate. Fake news. On May 22nd, and I've said all this before, but clearly you don't want to deal with fact. So on May 22nd, 2017, the Board of Commissioners adopted rates at 6.5% for three years. Commissioner Rushing fails to mention that on April 27th and in previous staff board meetings, it was clear that staff recommended going to 9%, 8%, and 8% for those previous three years. We went to 6.5. The board wasn't willing to adopt those rates. At the May 22nd, 2017 meeting, staff publicly indicated to the board and asked them to go back and redo the numbers. I was one of those board members, and as I've previously indicated, this decision, as well as others regarding rates, are why we're in the inevitable position to go with the larger increases. In hindsight, I wish I would have made the decision then to take the larger recommended increases, but I didn't. In fact, no board member asked for that. So I stand by my decision to fund Public Works' capital projects as this decision is in our long-term best interest. Commissioner Rushing also continues to spread fake news that alternatives to the Yadkin project weren't given serious consideration. Again, fake news. The county reviewed 12 alternative solutions. There is a 400-page document that goes into great detail about alternatives and the preferred solution, which obviously is the Yadkin Water Project. For anyone to make assertions that county staff or that the Board of Commissioners didn't do its due diligence is just flat-out wrong. Other items that Commissioner Rushing is spreading inaccurately includes a statement that the cost of Yadkin could, and I underlined could, be escalated to any amount, and future boards of commissioners will vote in favor. I am not able to see into the future, however, I have confidence in staff that they understand the limitations of the board to raise rates beyond what we are currently committed to. I'll also remind everyone that Mr. Rushing predicted the future when he told folks he could vote down the Yadkin project, but we see how that worked out. Once commissioners studied the project, they voted for it because it is the most fiscally and environmentally responsible project. The Yadkin Project is a 50-year project with a large cost, and yes, that cost has gone up over time. The board has been told numerous times that if the timeline was extended, which it was due to legal challenges to our I B T, costs would escalate. Staff has worked hard to keep the cost as manageable as possible. A sustainable, reliable water source for our community is what I'm interested in, and I and the majority of the board believe this is exactly what we're doing and is the right solution. I want to make two final important points. I've seen a lot of interest on this issue in social media. I'm always interested in hearing from constituents regarding their concerns regarding county business, and will continue to encourage everyone to make sure they have accurate information and are informed in the decisions they make. I do, however, want to point out that there are multiple utility services in Union County. I would encourage residents to become familiar with the utility they are accustomed of and know their rate structure. Lastly, it has come to my attention, and I don't think there's any question of it now based on your own comments, that Commissioner Rushing has been contacting other government staff that may or may not have anything to do with projects that our public staff are working on and attempting to gain information or misrepresent the position of the county. One of the components of the Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics is regarding administrative responsibilities. Specifically, it states that county commissioners should clearly distinguish legislative, adjudicatory, and administrative responsibilities, and should refrain from inappropriate interference in the impartial administration of county affairs by county employees. I hope that what I've heard regarding this contact is inaccurate. I'm not so certain it is. However, Commissioner Rushing, I want to state publicly that the position of this board through its official action is to continue the Yadkin Project. Any representation other than that is wrong and deceitful. Finally, I want to thank the Union County Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Board, who recently either passed a resolution or issued a letter of support for the Yadkin Project, because they too, as business owners in this county, understand the importance of this project. With that, I wish everyone a good evening.
I have no comments. I will offer a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.